I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Tonight, we have the Presentation of Colors by Owen High School and the instructors, Colonel Richard McConney, U.S. Army, retired. Please rise.
Attention! That's a half step. Forward march! Attention! Forward march!
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, colors! Right, face! At the half step, forward march!
I ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Don't move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's now time for our superintendent's comments.
It's really hard to believe, but on January 6th, after the long holiday break, which we certainly enjoyed, by the way, we began a brand-new semester in all of the high schools. And I want to thank our principals, our teachers, our staff for facilitating such a smooth transition. And I also want to thank Mother Nature's cooperation. That was very much appreciated as we were able to complete a full week of mostly uninterrupted exams. So, on we go. Christmas came early for one of our high schools. We are excited to announce that Community High School was selected by the State Board of Education to receive $1.7 million of innovative partnership grant funds that will be spread over a three-year period of time. The purpose of the funds is to provide comprehensive school reform and to eliminate the opportunity gap and significantly improve school performance. And across the state, there were a total of 105 schools that qualified for those particular funds. Qualification was based on a federal status as a comprehensive support and improvement campus, and we will be working with an external professional partner. There will be considerable training and resources that will be provided to the school, and all of that training will be based on best practices at a national level. And so, congratulations to Principal Jan Greenhoe and the Community High School staff. That has such incredible promise for that particular school. And I think it really is nice also that Jan, I think, moving into that brand-new facility and the renovation, that just a beautiful campus, that's got to be so exciting for your staff and your students. So, we are so excited and will be supporting you all the way. Several of our school administrators and our school resource officers attended a Safe Schools presentation, and the presentation was made by the former police chief of Coral Gables, Florida. His particular law enforcement team was one of the first responding agencies to Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School on the day that a shooting took place and it took the lives of 17 students and teachers. And needless to say, the shared details and descriptions of the incident and response were horrific. While a majority of the speaker's recommendations currently exist in our protocol, which is a good thing, improving school safety is ever-evolving, and we are committed in Buncombe County schools to assigning school safety as the highest of all priorities. Over the next few months, we will be bringing updates to you, the board, on several different safe-school fronts. Mr. Joe Huff and that team, we are so excited. He will be bringing you summaries on the, and the key findings for the Capital School Facilities Project. We're seeing some tremendous results already with that. And there will also be an upcoming launch across Buncombe County for a new Safe Schools app, reporting app, called Say Something Reporting. And that particular app was developed, by the way, by the Sandy Hook Promise, and it will support our 6th through 12th graders. So, more on that to come quite soon. Along the lines of student safety, I want to make you aware of a recently passed piece of legislation. That is Senate Bill 199. It will require all school personnel who work directly with students to receive education and awareness training relative to child sexual abuse and trafficking. The training will include, but not limited to, best practices from the field of prevention. The law will require teachers, instructional support personnel, principals and assistant principals to receive two hours of training in even-numbered years. It will begin next year, 2020. We will be working with the Sheriff's Department, court officials, as well as local non-government organizations with expertise in these areas. I want to recognize Mr. David Thompson, who is such a leader for us in our student services. David actually brought this concern in our own community to the forefront with our social workers and counselors last year. In this room, there was a training. So, you know, I'm pleased to know that we have a foundation, but that is going to be expanded across the state of North Carolina, as certainly it should be. The All County Middle and High School Bands, along with the District Honors Band, which is at the high school level, performed at North Buncombe High on Tuesday night. They had a standing-room audience, each of the three particular sets. And we're always so fortunate to have distinguished guest conductors, and often they come from colleges and universities across the southeast to work with our young people, our young music performers. And I understand that each one of those conductors generously praise the talent level of our student performers, as well as the quality of the instructional program. So, hats off to those music educators in Buncombe County schools, because it certainly is one of the high points of our arts program. In closing, a reminder that we will be closed, Martin Luther King Holiday, next Monday, January 20th. And I also want to make sure, board, that you have on your calendar mid-year graduation, if you can believe that, is here. It is scheduled for Saturday, January 25th. It will be at the Thomas Wolfe Auditorium, and it will begin at 11:00 in the morning, and we are projecting 175 student graduates. It seems like yesterday, how many years ago, when we first had our mid-year graduation, and I think we had at the time maybe 30, and now we're at 175. And that will be, I believe, almost the same number that we had last year. So, great opportunities for a number of our high school students out in Buncombe County. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. It's time for a public comment? No, it's not. It's time for good news. Sorry. Good news. David Thompson and Stephanie Buckner.
Yes, David Thompson, if you could come on down. Tonight, we have lots of talented staff and students to recognize, but first up, we're going to meet some special BCS counselors and social workers.
Well, members of the board, it is my pleasure to recognize some of the most outstanding of our student support professionals tonight.
The pleasure to work with these guys. Their accomplishments are many, and their praise is little. So, it's my pleasure to kind of give them some of that praise and some of that recognition tonight that they so richly deserve. We'll start with our Elementary School Counselor of the Year, representing North Windy Ridge Intermediate, and that's Ms. Amy Jamerson. Amy, if you'd like to come on. About Ms. Jamerson, and I'd really like to use the words of the folks who nominate her when I recognize our professionals. So, Ms. Jamerson goes above and beyond for the care for students and the support of her colleagues. She's positive, nurturing, compassionate, and the professional through and through. Amy is the unsung hero of BCS counselors. She's a prime example of all the other traits that make a great school counselor. She's also hardworking and extremely knowledgeable and is the 504 queen. Among her accomplishments are operating a running club at a school, at school one afternoon weekly, implementing and leading PBIS to an exemplar school model for the state recognition, implementing MTSS and being a member of the MTSS leadership team, leading staff through compassionate schools, culminating in the team professional development, Horse Sense of Western North Carolina, which I understand was a fabulous professional development for your staff. Hosting, because we asked them to, two different school systems to come and see what are we doing around compassionate schools and social-emotional learning, and they did a great job hosting those schools and demonstrating that. Leading our staff to bi-weekly leadership groups, grouping students plus providing lessons for all staff members, leading the Buncombe District, North Buncombe District, and setting up planning and delivering three different sessions for parents who have students with attendance problems, and serving students in the whole district from K-8. I mean, that sounds like a pretty full job to me. Amy, we appreciate what you do, and if I can find your reward here, I'll give it to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next is our Middle School Counselor of the Year, representing A.C. Reynolds Middle School, and that is Allison Rhodes. I've known Allison for a long time, and everything that I'm going to say written by her is absolutely true. Allison is an innovator. She is constantly looking for ways to improve her practice and serve the students at A.C. Reynolds Middle School in a meaningful and accessible way. While I worked with her last year, she was working toward her board certification, which was no small feat. During that time, she took the lead in using data from the student surveys to form a group, student group intervention. She created and maintains the calm spot. She was key in coordinating the school-wide use of Second Step, which is social-emotional curriculum during rocket time. And she was quick to respond and coordinate the presentation of the Say Something Curriculum to all students for the Sandy Hook Promise in the wake of the school shooting in Florida last year. This year, she started a Save Club, which is Students Against Violence Everywhere, and worked with students as they led a heartfelt, week-long response to the loss of Riley Howell at UNCC and student fears around gun violence. She is trained in mindfulness and shares her knowledge throughout the district and the school. Allison is the epitome of the person-centered compassionate professional school counselor. She intentionally creates a warm, calm, and inviting counseling suite in which to provide services to students and to support and collaborate with school staff. Innovative, passionate, authentic, courageous, describe her approach to school counseling. She has a heart for service, self-respect, and empowerment, and inspires kids to become leaders in efforts to seek social justice, promote kindness, and inclusiveness of all people. Absolutely true, every bit of it. Our next recognition is for representing the Inca High School, and that is Lois Peterson. Lois is a nationally board-certified school counselor and a licensed professional counselor. She consistently goes above and beyond her required duties to provide mental health services, academic support, and career and college counseling for students. Lois makes connections with her students in the community, touching base with them at their respected school or weekend jobs to reinforce the values of education and administration. She is an excellent team player with her colleagues and administration. She spearheaded the opioid prevention education initiative at Inca High School and is to be commended for her additional efforts in that endeavor. Lois will tell you, and this is from someone else's words, that she is a workhorse and not a show pony. But the truth is, she will gladly assume any role that she believes, that she believes will help her students. She is a tireless worker and actively seeks any opportunity to be of service. Two of her many initiatives since she's been at Inca High School are enhancing and expanding College Week, adding many activities designed to build a college-going culture, and leading the efforts to highlight and reduce the opioid epidemic, forming and leading the student committee. She's also a big reason why Inca High School has so many students involved in distance learning. AB Tech should add her to the payroll because she spends many hours recruiting students and facilitating their access to their ever-expanding online opportunities. It's a joy to have Lois as a colleague. She's organized, a big producer, and a great friend. And thank you, Lois, very much. Switching from counselors to the social work role, we want to recognize our Buncombe County School Social Worker of the Year, representing C.A. Irvin High School, Shelley Rader. If you spend about five minutes in a room, well, Shelley will know that the first sentence is true. She is a bundle of positive energy and motivation. She is compassionate and hardworking and slow to take any credit. She can turn any pity party into a quickly, into a motivational seminar, and if you believe you can do anything, and make you believe that you can do anything. She listens, really listens, but then hears what you are struggling with and makes you think you can do anything. And that's what her, that's with her coworkers. Just imagine what she does for students. She can ask the hard questions, and she can, but in a way that you don't feel like you need to defend yourself, you just truly want to join her and find a solution. She serves her school with diligence and humor. She also has many positions in leadership for BCS as a whole. And last month, I presented, I talked to you a little bit about our threat assessment process. Shelley was an essential leader in leading the social work team and that team in developing that process. So, I recognize her as a leader in our district and with our team. So, she did help address that whole threat assessment protocol and then train the staff in leading that. In both circumstances, she was willing to do anything asked of her, and she was fully present, looking for solutions. Buncombe County Schools and Irvin High School are extremely fortunate to have a school and district leader who speaks her mind, advocates for students, and other social workers, challenges preconceived ideas, and fosters collaboration. She has totally deserved of being recognized as School Counsel, School Social Worker of the Year. We are extremely fortunate this year, and we're a little bit taken, shocked a little bit, because we didn't really know that she had been nominated. But at the School Social Worker Conference this year, we had one of our social workers who was recognized as the North Carolina School Social Worker of the Year. So, that's, that's pretty impressive. And we're, so tonight, we really want to recognize...
Molly Pittman.
Oh, Molly Pittman. I was trying to recognize what your name is. Hi, come on up, Molly. Molly is currently, as of about two weeks, two weeks ago, Molly is officially now just at Inca Middle School and Inca Intermediate School. She has served other schools within our district. But Molly, too, is one of those people who comes into a room with, as a bundle of energy, and also helped lead our team in writing and developing the threat assessment protocol. Among her, the comments from her colleagues was Molly is a consummate professional and a leader among her social work peers. She makes excellent connections with students and parents, allied professionals, and in community members to provide quality social work services. She's an integral part of school communities, has excellent clinical skills, and is well-deserving of recognition for her work. Molly's leadership at her schools extends to community involvement with United Way, BCS implementation of community schools model. She is often with students and parents at homework diners to make certain her students are accessing that resource to work on attendance requirements. Molly has also been instrumental in writing, revising, and training the BCS Threat Assessment Protocol. She is an advocate for her students while holding them accountable in academics, attendance, and behavior. And I've seen her do that. She does a great job. On top of being a great social worker, Molly is a cross-country coach at her middle school and runs marathons in her free time. Her energy level, dedication to students is recognized and appreciated by her schools, staff, students, parents, and by our district leadership. Thank you, Molly. Great job.
All right, could we have everyone, we'll do a few different versions of the picture. Could we have you guys all go towards the middle, and Ben will direct you? And board members, get ready to get up, but not yet, not yet. So, I'll have Mr. Bryant, Ms. McMahon, Ms. Franklin, and Mr. Queen come on down. You can hop in the picture. Oh, and Dr. Baldwin should probably come down, too. And now Stephanie Buckner's going to come on down. She is our math curriculum specialist. She's going to introduce us to several staff and students who make the math department
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. Each year, the North Carolina Council of Teachers of Mathematics, in partnership with the Department of Public Instruction, recognizes outstanding mathematics teachers of North Carolina. This year, Ms. Amanda Fields, fourth-grade teacher at Weaverville Elementary School, was presented with this award at the state meeting held in Greensboro in November. Thanks. Ms. Fields has sought from early on in her career, and I'm quoting this from her writing, "to create cross-curricular activities in the classroom where students are engaged and passionate about learning, especially learning mathematics." To help her create these activities, she has vigorously applied for and received local, state, and even national grant funding. Ms. Fields has also positioned herself as a math leader, both at Weaverville Elementary and in Buncombe County schools. And while all this is pretty impressive, the best information I can share with you comes from the second row, and if they'll come join me. We had no idea they were showing up. These are current fourth graders in Ms. Fields' class, and some of them told me when we visited back in the fall that Ms. Fields helps us, and we get to learn a lot of math with her. And another one said, "She makes sure that everyone understands before we move on to the next thing." Is that true? It's for all these reasons, and I'm sure if I gave them the microphone, they'd have many more reasons to tell you, but I'll get you out of here, that we are really honored to recognize Ms. Amanda Fields as the Buncombe County Schools Elementary Math Teacher of We also have another math award. You guys could stay down here.
Yeah. Thank you. Do this. Do it.
And this is the first time that I have been able to give this award in Buncombe County schools. The North Carolina Teacher, or Council of Teachers of Mathematics, NCTM, holds a state logo contest each year as part of our annual meeting. Logos are drawn by students and then submitted by their math teacher to the board for vote. The state-winning logo is used as part of NCTM's state conference and is printed and sold on T-shirts. This year's winning logo was the first time ever to completely sell out of T-shirts at the conference. The winning logo, NCTM State Logo Contest, was submitted by Ms. Brandy Fleckenstein, sixth-grade teacher at North Windy Ridge Intermediate School, and was drawn by her then-sixth-grade student, now-seventh-grade student at North Buckle Middle School, will say it correctly. Of, oh, hang on. Brandy, come help me. I practiced, too. I don't want to butcher her name. Avneal. Avneal Kraus, if Avneal will come join us, too. Fields' winning shirt, and it's my honor to present both a shirt and a certificate to Avneal and Ms. Fleckenstein for her winning logo.
All right, Ms. Swanger, it's time for the curriculum feature.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baldwin. Tonight, we've recognized the Counselor of the Year, the Social Worker of the Year, and let's hear a little bit about the work that they're doing inside our schools. We've come to rely on their expertise to help us with something that we've talked about for many years, compassionate schools and the importance of social-emotional learning. So, I invite Mr. Thompson to come back, and tonight, he is accompanied by Shannon Martin, who helps us with coordinating day treatment and special mental health and behavioral health opportunities, and Michelle Smith, who helps us with not only multi-tiered systems of support, but our positive behavior interventions and support. So, welcome, team.
So, we'll start from the beginning. It's a very good place to start here. Tonight, I'm really happy again to talk with you guys and the board about where we are in the process of implementing and creating that continuous continuum of services and supports for all students around compassionate schools and trauma-informed care, around social-emotional learning, and supports in place for that, as well as our mental health supports and services. We are seeing a high number of our students who need both outpatient, regular outpatient, core supportive services, specific interventions, behavior specialist support, mental health, and then even beyond, working with how does this impact school safety that Dr. Baldwin talked about earlier, and where do, where are we right now? talked about earlier, and where do, where are we right now in evaluating and understanding that we have to change as time goes by? So we're going to talk about, a little bit of what we talk about tonight is the reality of what we do, and a little bit of a division for where we want to be. So wanted, wanted to get back to looking at what that looks like for you guys. So I'm going to start with just making a connection with your strategic plan for our district about why we included some of the objectives in the strategic plan and how it connects to our current work. So as part of that, it says, "Schools and staff receive professional development on best practices in meeting social, emotional, and physical needs of child." So what we didn't want to do in our process as we looked at it, we were training compassionate schools as a totally separate component. And so we had MTSS over here, we had something else over here, and then we did compassionate schools. We realized that compassionate schools must be delivered along a continuum, and when we talk about multi-tiered systems of support, compassionate schools, social-emotional learning must be embedded into the, how we look at each of those levels. So right now, we're really focusing really hard on core instruction. What does it look like for all students? When we, when we feel that we have done that realistically, we will then move to supplemental or tier-two services. How do we take those same evidence-based practices and apply them for specific groups of students or students who have specific needs? And then how do we intensify that for specific individual students to make sure that those students have what they need with very individualized planning? So we look at all of those things, those problem, tiered problem-solving and environments, looking at all of those things to look, to come up with that strategic, part of the strategic plan. Then we look at trained and compassionate schools framework, trauma-informed and resiliency building strategies into those multi-tiered systems. And then we look at, how does that impact attendance? How does that impact academic performance? And how do we make those clear connections between social-emotional learning and behavioral health to academic improvement? One of the last things on there says that we would research and implement restorative practices. We've kind of met and we're kind of beginning to exceed some of that. We, we've got about 10 schools, I think, right now, trained in restorative practices, and we're still working on the implementation, but realizing now with that it takes time to build that to fidelity. So that's kind of where we are with that practice. So I'm going to turn this over now to my colleagues, probably Michelle.
Okay. That's a lot. And when we started doing this, it took a, took a lot of thought to think about, what all do we do? And how do we, how do we make this make sense to you guys? Um, a teacher voice. So I'll try not to blow your ears off. I speak loud. So what David talked about was a three-tiered instruction model, and I think the easiest way, you'll have a slide in a minute, but when we think about three-tiered instruction model, you want to think, what does everyone get? Core. That's core instruction. We might layer a little bit on for some of our kids, need some supplemental support, and some of our kids need some very intensive supports. So we've worked really hard, system-wide, to do some integration. So instead of EC services working over here on their own, and then student services working over here, we're really collaborative. Dr. Baldwin mentioned that this morning in our principal's meeting, and I appreciated hearing, we are more collaborative. So I, I work with Stephanie and all curriculum, and that, that's nice. So we're really doing, I think, a better job of embedding social-emotional learning and behavioral supports within academics, so that it's not one more thing. How do I do what I do as a teacher? I got a lot on my plate. How do I make sure that those supports, the environment, all kids feel like they want to come to school? You know, that's what we want. We want all kids to come to school. So that's how we took PBIS, we're trying to mesh compassionate schools, PBIS, even all of our social-emotional learning within a multi-tiered system of support. What do all kids get? What do some kids need interventions with, and what do a few kids need some very intensive interventions? So I won't list everything on here, but we have a lot of evidence-based practices we use. We're starting, we've got check-in, check-out going in, probably 30-something schools. We just had our first high school get trained in check-and-connect. The state of North Carolina paid for it, and so Irwin High School sent a group, so they're going to have eight trained staff doing check-and-connect. We've got, like David said, restorative practices going on, and leading a lot of that, doing that work, community resilience model and resources for resilience, along with Allison, all the stuff we just talked about, mindful schools. And then all of our data, we did, we've been looking at our panorama, which is our social-emotional screening, so that's the first time we've had an opportunity to be able to look and, and get some real hard data on what does social-emotional learning look like in the school system? And then curriculum. So all of those things are a part of a multi-tiered system of support. We look at instruction, curriculum, and environment, whether it's academics, behavior, and attendance, those are the things that we're looking at all the time. And so we really are being, trying to be really mindful about how do these fit within academic curriculum? And instead of it being a separate, oh, now you're going to get SEL, how do I weave that in? Our master teachers do that. They, they know. They know how to balance that classroom so that kids learn those soft skills. I don't even like to call them soft skills, because those are skills that get you through life. They're essential skills to be able to, to collaborate, to work with people, to get your needs met. And so how do we do that just seamlessly? So that's the future, and we're, we're on the cusp of it, I believe. So that's exciting.
So Michelle referenced in the graphic references our school-based mental health. And just to give background, because that feels, I think, a lot of times is peripheral to what we do. We are educators, and then there's this service over here. And it has become so clear over the last two to five years that it is critical to what we do. It is critical, first and foremost, for what Michelle and David have already said. Social-emotional well-being is critical to academic success. And just like our students need school nursing to have physical well-being in order to be healthy and achieving students, they need mental and behavioral health care to be healthy and achieving students and to make the growth and achieve what we know they can by accessing the curriculum and instruction that our fabulous teachers provide for them. We also know sadly, as Dr. Baldwin referenced earlier, school mental health is critical to school safety. If we are going to ensure our students and our parents that they are safe at school, we have to have a robust school mental health partnership with our provider agencies, with our hospital, and even with our MCR, our managed care organization, to make sure that we can tell children in our schools and parents who call and are worried that we have readily available to us tools and strategies and resources when children and adolescents go into crisis and prevent, present safety challenges to us, and to help us problem-solve for ongoing safety challenges, because there are quite a few. Oh, God, I got to clip on something. So Michelle mentioned earlier, and this is just a really nice graphic, quickly, that looks at that idea of core, what we do for everybody, supplemental, what we do for some, and intensive, what we do for a few. And that is really true across our mental health services continuum as well. That's what they keep telling me. I need technology training, evidently. So, oh, well, you moved me past my one. Just quickly, when we look at our services in our community, we have a lot of outpatient therapy and individual group therapy, both through our three school-based providers that have permission to work in our schools and, excuse me, RHA services, access family services and a caring alternative, as well as a fourth provider in our community. And then we have those intensive supports available to our students, which include our embedded day treatment program, intensive in-home services, which is a family and community-based service, and an enhanced support services. And we are really using this language with our mental health providers, so that when they come into schools and when they talk to families, they're saying the same thing to the families that our counselors and social workers are saying, the same thing that our teachers are saying. So it doesn't look like something else. It just looks like a part of what we do. There's a little bit of data on the slide. There's a lot of data in this folder. I will caution you that it is raw data. We, one of the challenges that we face is we have always asked our provider agencies to tell us how many students they serve. We are now asking them to tell us some more detailed information about that. We're also working this year with our three school-based providers to come up with a common way for them to assess progress around symptom reduction, so that we can really see how effective they are in working with our students, so that we make sure that we're bringing into our school system the most effective evidence-based practices, providers, and clinicians, so that our students are getting the very best that we can offer them. This year, we have had 957 new referrals. The other thing, as I caution about data, is this is dynamic. That number's probably not right today, because it changes every day. You get new referrals, you get children that come into care every day, and you get children that discharge out of care. But when we put this slide together, we had 957 new referrals and about 1,079 students in treatment. Some of those students continued in treatment from last year, is why those numbers don't jive. You can see that right now, our largest age group of children in care, by and away, are elementary and intermediate students, and that's a double-edged sword. We are delighted for kids to get early intervention, because we know that that is when it's most successful, and we can really impact their lives. Conversely, it is really, really sad to think about the number of really young children who are requiring mental health support in that supplemental tier. For our intensive level of services, right now, we have 36 students in care in our day treatment program. We've had about 61 referred this year. And through the intensive in-home service, which again is a community-based service, but they partner with teachers and principals in schools. And so you may see them in a school building, providing some additional support, particularly around safety. We have 96 students currently in care between the, the three agencies that are school-based. There are additional children in our community in care through other providers. So as I said, this is raw, and we'll continue to work on this. But I think that's really reflective of the percentage of children in our system receiving care. What's unfortunate is if this many students are receiving care based on instant rate, that means there are a lot, a lot of students who need care who aren't receiving it, and that's a challenge that we talk about quite a bit, how we wrap around other students, how we work with families to be more open to receiving services, how we work around issues like uninsured or privately insured families who can't afford care, so that we have, really have some equity around behavioral health needs.
And lastly, I just recognize all of these professionals, as well as others that I work with, because we really, we really are part of several leadership groups around school-based mental health, both in-state and with some adjoining states that we do. We are part of a Carolina Network for School Mental Health between North Carolina, South Carolina. We're part of a mental health technology transfer center, Southeast Behavioral Collabor-, School Mental Health Collaborative, it's hard to get all of that out in one sentence, out of Embry University, that serves Alabama, North Carolina, Kentucky, Alabama, Mississippi, and South Carolina. So that is, that is another organization that we connect to for more resources and training. We are connected to the state school-based mental health, and Buncombe is actually a leader in that process at the state around putting in place consistent practices for mental health across the state, and work in that partnership. So, and, and we've partnered with the Center for School, the National Center for School Mental Health in Baltimore, and Shannon will be leading us in using their curriculum for organizing and putting an infrastructure around school-based mental health over the next few years. So, yeah, we really are using some of the best practices out there to try to put those things in place, all the while recognizing where I started this presentation is that we are seeing that increasing number of students, both in the frequency and in the acuity of the, of their needs that they're presenting to us. And we recognize that while we have some things in place, and we probably are ahead of many pla-, many counties and many school districts in North Carolina, we have gaps in those services that we need to fill. And we know we do. We talked with principals about it today. Our needs are, our needs today are not the same needs that we had five years ago, when we started putting this together. So we are, we, we, we started those conversations this week with Dr. Baldwin and Shannon, myself. We're looking at where are other places that are doing quality work that we can learn from? What are those national best practices, models? And what would those look like if we adapted those for Buncombe County Schools and the needs that we have? So we will be bringing back to you some other things that we would be recommending, that, that we'll continue to work on. We're going to go visit some of these places, and we're going to try to bring back what we believe would be the best resource to have. We didn't mention, and I, I'm not going to leave it out, is that we really work closely with our EC department on the behavior support team, and that has been a huge addition to the supports that we have. There's some additional numbers I can provide to you for how many services they have delivered this year, and how many trainings that they have done, and it is really phenomenal work. And we are, we, we, we cross those departmental lines to, to do that service, and that's an important thing for us to have. But we also have some needs beyond that for other, other groups of students that we need to recognize. So we'll be bringing back some other things as we learn more. Thank you.
Thank you. It's now time for public comment.
Yes, ma'am. Tonight, we have one public comment. That would be Leanna Delfe of Lester, speaking on the calendar for 2021.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for your time. My name is Leanna Delfe, Vice President of BCAE, and I've been asked to make this comment on behalf of Paula Dinga, President, who cannot be here tonight. As a member of the calendar committee, I appreciate the complexity of meeting all the needs and preferences of a large school system. It is made even more complicated by the constraints of an inflexible state calendar law that governs the earliest and latest student day. The conversation has been considerate communication over two sessions, where we deliberated the best balance of instructional and professional work time. It included representation from the entire spectrum of stakeholders, and I participated from the perspective of teachers and their feedback, requesting planning and prep time to be protected from interruptions and inconsistency. It appears as though, in that pursuit, we may have overlooked some unintended consequences that merit a closer look. In protecting teacher planning days at strategic times throughout the first and second quarters, we have pushed the end of the second quarter to the 22nd of December, so very close to the busiest and therefore most expensive travel days of the year. Families of high school students taking semester exams and all teachers and their families will have little to no option for traveling to be with their families prior to the holiday. Attendance in lower grades will likely suffer, as those families may opt to travel regardless of the school calendar. Teachers are right to want all appropriate measures taken to protect their valuable planning time, when lessons are planned and differentiated, when papers are graded and parents are contacted, when conferences and collaborative meetings are held. I am loathe to request any changes that reduce protected teacher planning time. However, a closer look, and with an opportunity for feedback from educators about the very real consequences of that effort, the trade-off may not be worth it. I have had dozens of conversations today with the overwhelming response from teachers being that they would give up the planning time in October or November to facilitate a better schedule in December. A few adjustments to the existing draft may be worth further consideration in a timely manner. A broader effort to allow all teachers, and parents, too, to review the drafts through a survey and choose which would best serve their students, families, and their work, would give more comprehensive feedback. My apologies for throwing a potential wrench into the process at the ele-
Thank you.
It's time. Next item on the agenda is the action agenda. First item is 2019-2020 Budget Amendment Number Two. That's Ms. Frisbee. Members of the board have questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Peggy seconded.
You have a question?
No, Peggy seconded.
You seconded. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I'm very perceptive tonight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item's Community High School additions and renovations project approval of a change order. Questions by members of the board. Mr. Fairley?
My question applies to both the community high school and the North Buncombe Middle School change orders. And we, we corresponded about this already, and I appreciate you answering my question, that these change orders would be covered by the contingency funds. And so my question is, do we, I just want to understand the contingency funds better. Do we have- Do we have individual contingency funds for each project? Or do we have one big contingency fund that we draw from as needed for different projects?
Well, we kind of have both. But every project, when it's brought to you for award is, there's going to be some holdback in that budget for unknowns, because in construction, there always is. So sometimes they're less than we would like them to be. But sometimes you overrun that, and then we have to go to like a capital outlay contingency that we hold for all those small projects. And we have, you know, we have kind of a group fund that we'll have to, to tap to complete a project.
So these two are both coming from that other sort of bigger one? Is that-
No, no, these two are coming from the contingency that was held within each of those projects.
Gotcha. Okay. And how are we doing in terms of our safety net contingency that you just described, the separate one? Do you keep track, presumably you do keep track of that through the year? And just want to, I'm just curious about how we are doing with having enough there.
Mr. Huff really manages that, and he reporting that we're in good shape right now.
Good. I just want to make sure we're covered. Thank you.
Other questions from board members? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the Community High School Addition and Renovations Project Change Order.
So moved.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? North Buncombe Middle School Gym Lobby CTE and Arts Renovations Project, finally made it to print. Any questions from board members about this? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? School Calendar 2020-2021, and this is a draft. Ms. Swanger. Do we have questions from the board?
We do, and perhaps just some comments to go along with it and like to have some discussion on it. And first of all, I'd like to just say that this is probably one of the hardest things and hardest committees to be a part of, because there really isn't any easy answer. And I appreciate the knowledge and, I mean, I, I just can imagine the brain size that's in that room when y'all are hashing all of this out to try to come up with something that works. It frustrates me that we have that kind of knowledge in a room that pours over this for hours, days, and yet we still have something that just doesn't quite work. And I'm going to blame that on our horrible and not flexible at all calendar law that we have. So I hope that if nothing else, this will lead to some more advocates in the way of parents and, and staff to our General Assembly to finally give us the opportunity to, to have real control over our calendar and what works for us here in Buncombe County. With that being said, I do think that we should go back and look at those options for the last couple of days before Christmas break. I understand that we are looking at using those as possible test dates. And I, for one, can certainly appreciate having the test dates prior to the school break, because I, I just, I think the kids need that time to just really, truly unwind. So I think it kind of comes down to quality versus quantity. And while I can certainly appreciate the need for the 85 days to get as much instruction in as possible, I also wonder if it might not serve just as well to have the instruction happen in October, as opposed to, we're still using those last few days of December when I feel strongly that there's going to be a lot of checked out staff and, and students, quite honestly. I mean, it's just natural, you think about us when we get ready to have a long break, where mind isn't necessarily on what we're doing every day at work. So I would just like to really suggest that we go back and, and just possibly consider the option of taking that October the 5th day and putting that in as an instructional day and changing the October 19th day to a full instructional day and having the 21st and the 22nd off, with the 21st being an optional teacher work day. And I think that if we could do this in a way that gives ultimately, ultimately the staff the decision power to do this in a vote and draft A and draft B, that would, that is what I would like to support. I'm just not real sure I can support this particular draft tonight.
And I understand, it is a very complex process. Let me walk through first semester and just give the board an idea of how the calendar comes to be. We have 37 committee members all across the district, from students, parents, staff members, principals, teachers. Ms. Delfe graciously sat on the committee as well. Couple of big differences. We heard from multiple educators and those in our school system that they wanted a very intense period at the beginning of the school year. And you will see a big change that we need everyone to understand are those first yellow days, and yellow means designated teacher work days. In the past, we have had three designated days in the calendar, one at the beginning, one at the end, and one for professional development. We moved the October Professional Development Day to August, so that have, that will happen on the 11th. On the 10th, you might wonder, why do we have a designated day on that day? We are going to do our best as a district office to offer trainings and mandatory meetings that would involve teachers in terms of healthcare plans, diabetes training, 504 training, special ed training, Title I training. We want to give teachers one day that they have to come and do the stuff aspects. If they don't have any of those meetings to attend, they are feel, they can work in their classrooms. And teachers told us on the committee that, you know, gosh, I want to work anyway, so why not get paid for that day? So we're starting on August 10th, and we have two days that have some district influence, and then the 11, the 12th, 13th, and 14th are school-based. Meet the Teacher, orientation, principal, teacher meetings, those kinds of things. So the front of the counter is very nice. What I need to make the board aware of is we are starting this year with a waiver, a weather waiver, because we qualified. This, unless we miss seven more days this current school year, we won't have the opportunity to apply for a waiver for the next year when we're planning the calendar. And you may ask, why is that important? Well, that waiver allows us to start early, because the calendar law states that we can't start any closer to the Monday, we can only start on a Monday closest to August 19th. So that's how we are starting on the 17th. Most school districts without waivers can start only at the 24th. So that weather waiver is a very important, useful tool that's formula-driven. So that has a little bit of concern for years moving forward. We've heard for years that please, please, please get exams before the holiday break, if at all possible. And when you start on the 24th of August, there is no possibility to do that. Because of the waiver, because of the way the calendar fell for this current school year, we were able to do that. And yes, the winter holidays were in a very nice, neat, two-week package, and everyone enjoyed that time, myself included. But it happens to be the way Christmas Day fell as New Year's Day. So we did have a nice, neat package. This one, not so neat. We also have to think about if our teachers, especially in the high school level, are compacting their curriculum to teach more, teach faster, and still achieve mastery, that they have to have the time to do so. First semester has no professional learning community days. Second semester, you do see those times that we dismiss early so teachers can collaborate. We just don't have the time for semester. We also limited the amount of professional development for secondary teachers, especially the high school teachers. We didn't want to bring them out of their classrooms because they were so intense on getting their pacing done this semester. That being said, in the survey that we mentioned that very question, I prefer a compacted first semester and longer second semester in order to have exams before winter break. And 52.7% said they either agree or strongly agree. So that was important to our teachers. The other question from the survey that was very helpful, I feel as an educator that the benefits of a compacted first semester outweigh the pacing challenges. And that was about 48% that agreed with that statement. So taking all that into consideration, you're right, Ms. Churchill, it gets so complex. Ms. Delfe mentioned that as well. What do we do? We have two other challenges. Look at November, November 3rd, that green day, that is an optional teacher work day. The reason of that day, it is a presidential election. We cannot hold school on a presidential election day. That's just not possible. So there's one day out of the, the number of days that we can have instruction. We heard loudly from teachers, please, please give us a break in October. We can't get our work done in our classrooms. We need a day. So Monday, October 5th is that day that could be a fall break for families, as well as an optional day that teachers can work, or they don't have to work if they have leave and they may take leave. The gold colored days, October 19th and December 22nd, those are early dismissals for teachers to use as, for working in their classroom, grades, report cards, whatever they choose to use. I would imagine that Dr. Baldwin would, if this is the final calendar, say on the 22nd, after students are safely dismissed, everyone can leave, as he has done many times in the past. We know that the December lineup is, it's not in that same nice, neat package. It also goes into, if I can get it to come down, a teacher work day on the return in So it is a nine-day vacation versus a 10-day that we have had this year. Most years, we go between nine and 10 days off. One year, it was an eight-day. We certainly know that the time is needed for everyone. What concerns me and what I wish I could do, I could certainly survey and ask teachers, do you want to give up the October day and put that on December 22nd? But I still have to have one more day, and I'm not, we really don't know where that would come from. We have really racked our heads over it, and maybe there's a better idea out there than those principals and 37 committee members and myself. We are open to it, but this calendar has an 85 first, 85 days for first semester and a 95-day total for second semester. Typically, we have missed one to two weather days for semester, and that's only been in the last three years. Hurricane or early snow or ice. In days past, we usually don't miss those days, first semester. We missed them all second semester. But if you remember last year, three of the four days we missed in the school year were in December. Now, we could take a gamble, and if we started missing days in December, we would have to move exams if we do, we, and we would have to adjust, because all in all, we want the ca, that we want the calendar to be pleasing to families, to students, to teachers and staff. But most importantly, it's about covering and teaching with mastery all of the instructional strategies and content that we're charged to deliver. So it's an instructional issue. I have to, I have to protect that instructional time. But I am certainly willing to open, and open to suggestions of however best you would like to direct the Calendar Committee.
Ms. Swanger, can you talk a little bit about, there are the two different ways of calculating, right? In some years, because of weather, we've gone to calculating based on hours rather than days?
We always have to meet hours, and there is a minimum of 1,025 hours. And the law gives us the flexibility. We could say, okay, we're going to go to school 185 days. Hours don't matter. Or we go to school 1,025 hours. And we always exceed, we have a bucket of supply time because we don't know what early dismissals or late starts we're going to have because of weather. So we do account for that in the calendar. And, and teachers will tell you, we need more time, not less time.
Other questions or comments from the board?
I guess my only other thing is, though, is that we're really talking about just a couple of hours when it all comes down to it, as far as days, because we're looking at moving, swapping days, because in October, you have less, if you take those days, there's less instructional days in that month. Or you can take them in December. The difference being, the early dismissals, if you change the 19th to a full instructional day, then you have lost, is it four hours, I guess?
The 19th is a two-hour early dismissal.
Right.
And, and in a school on that day, they just compress the schedule. So classes are shorter in length.
Right. So if that became a full instructional day, you're not really losing time on that day, but you would be losing some time on the 22nd.
Before I let this cow get out of the fence, I would entertain a motion to approve this, and then we'll go to discussion. Could I get a motion to approve this calendar?
Point of order, Madam Chair, why would we approve, we're in the midst of discussion, why would we approve it and then go back to discuss?
Let the cow out of the fence.
I mean, typically, you all have, you all have discussed items that were up for approval.
You're just wanting a motion and a second, not a vote.
And then a discussion.
I'll make the motion to approve the calendar as presented.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
And then you all are welcome to-
Now we can discuss.
I keep discussing.
Or make other motions.
I misunderstood what she was asking us to do. I'm sorry.
I was thinking she was calling me a cow.
No, no, no. Boy, I backed into that one. I'm sorry.
I do have a question or an observation. I know that when we do have inclement weather, and we use up all of our inclement weather time, et cetera, and we opt for makeup on snow days on a Saturday. Now, is there anything, I imagine if we put this to a vote, and we even put it out to the parents and say, we recognize this, however, an option could be, we will cancel teacher work day on the 5th of October, and we also are proposing, in order to do this, a Saturday. Would you be in favor of that? And I dare say that you would get mass support for that, and that would solve the problem. Is there an issue that, is that a bad idea? I don't know. I'd throw it out.
I'm going to, that's a very good question. I want to confer to Dean McGuff. Something in my history with the Calendar Committee, if we cancel a work day, I mean, there is a, by law, regarding our teachers, we have to communicate that there is a period of time that had, they have to be aware. Do you remember 14 days?
14 days. And I mean, you can give advance notice of that on, on the actual calendar, but if there's not advance notice of that for a optional teacher work day, you have to, and you change that, you have to give 14 days notice. But that can, again, that can be easily rectified by giving notice on the calendar.
14 days ahead.
Yes, sir.
But Max, are you proposing that we just schedule one school day on a Saturday?
That would be my suggestion, and that way, parents can plan for it. It's nothing that's being thrown at them. And I think when they see that, and the children would be out for that whole week just prior to Christmas, that they see the value of that visiting grandparents. I think it would be overwhelmingly accepted. If there's nothing that would prohibit us from doing that by law or by statute, then maybe even just sending home a questionnaire or just, I don't know, asking, first of all, ask the teachers.
If we have class on Saturday, and we are in school for five school days, and then have class for that sixth day, it puts our employees in overtime. So we do, pardon?
I was going to say-
So then-
And teachers. Yeah. And attendance.
That could be a budgetary issue as well.
Well, what if we did it on the election week? They're not working. School is closed.
You could do it on Saturday, the 10th.
And that would take out the overtime provision, because it's not all 40.
You would have to-
Saturday, November 7th. I see.
You would, you would have to tell classified staff not to come to work on the 3rd.
Absolutely.
And you would probably have to just make that a day off instead of an optional teacher work day, because teachers have got a six day, you know, typically, the only time we ever have school on a Saturday, because the way you have to fit that in is if nobody worked on a particular- on a Saturday, because the way you have to fit that in is if nobody worked on a particular day during that same week in order to get it in. I mean, that could be, I'm not saying it couldn't be done, but you would most likely have to require classified staff not to come to work on the 3rd of November as well as teachers.
But I don't, I just want to throw this out. I don't think teachers, you say, well, they're, you know, it'd be a six day, teachers work every day. And I think, again, you're weighing, you know, a benefit for them at that Christmas break period, benefit for the students, benefit for the families. I don't think you're gonna hear any outcry of, oh, woe is me. I think it's, it's an innovative way to approach the problem.
That's from the Inca community, from the North Baca community.
May I make a comment?
Let me just tell you.
High school students, though, we have to think about kids who have jobs and many students only work on the weekends. So we have to be careful about that.
And I also, I think if people see a schedule that has a Saturday school day, they're not gonna think, oh, good, that means that I get to have another day off at Christmas time. They're not gonna see that trade-off, you know? It's just gonna be, whoa, Saturday work, Saturday school day.
Mrs. Swanger, I have a question for you as well. On this calendar, when are high school exams scheduled?
The last five days of the semester. So they would, they would start on December 16th, 17th, 18th, 21st and 22nd.
So am I assuming that the 22nd would be like a makeup day for a student?
It could be a makeup, but it would, some schools, it takes four full days or five full days to administer, including teacher-made exams.
Madam Chair.
And we did, we did talk about attendance being an issue. That's why you don't see a one-day school week. We, because we've talked about that October 5th ability to move that work day to the 22nd, but families aren't going to easily come to school for just one day in a school week. High school students might because it's exam day.
I will say this, though. Max did bring up something about the weather. I also, in advocating for the 5th, would say this. Chances are, we're not gonna need to make up day before October the 5th, but we very likely could need one in December. And so if you took that 5th and moved it to the 21st, 22nd, whatever, as with the understanding like we often do with spring break, that could be one of your snow makeup days. But if we keep it the way that it is and October 5th comes and goes without a reason to use it as a snow day, then we have nothing to buffer for snow days in November or December that I can see.
What we do, this current year.
Why are you laughing at me?
This, we missed November 12th or I can't remember exactly the day that we missed this year already for snow. We will make up that day at the end of the calendar. We really trying to keep first semester intact just so that teachers can ensure that they're covering and teaching with mastery all of their, their content.
And then to talk about the testing, could we not start testing on December the 14th and go through December the 18th?
Teachers would lose two days of teaching time.
But not really because then you've put them up into the 5th and the 19th. You've just moved them up into the month.
We could move, the 5th is a total school day. The 19th is only a two-hour early release. So teachers are teaching a little bit less that day. So they're not even using those two early dismisses. Those four hours don't equate to a whole day of school. Again, it's about having enough days in a semester. Right now, we're at 85. If you direct me to go down to 84 and if we miss one snow day, we might have to move exams to after Christmas. My biggest concern is the tiredness of our teaching staff in October. Now, will they rally knowing that Christmas vacation, holiday, winter break is coming? I don't know. That would be something we've got to know because we, we heard very loudly from teacher groups, from our administrators, everyone in, everyone in October this current school year was very tired. We started early. Kids were tired and.
And we had a teacher work day in October, but it was then changed to be, yes, for that. So, right. And I appreciate that y'all listened to that and changed it to this first week of August. I think this is awesome, that, that particular week.
If we take all of the time away from them in October, because if, if we do as you're suggesting, no work day and no early dismissal, that's a lot for them.
It is. And that's why I'm saying I would, I would want this to go back to them to make that ultimate decision. But at least they would have the opportunity to feel like their voices were heard one way or the other on that.
Is there anything that prohibits us from having equally balanced semesters?
We typically have not for many years due to snow days. We, we generally have one semester shorter than another.
But you could do it, but you'd have to go after January. You'd have to, you'd have to do your exams after Christmas to be able to do that.
Well, that's what I'm asking because I know that in this fall semester, the fall term, you have 85 days and in the spring term, you have 95 days. If you simply back up those days where you're bringing staff in, beginning on the 10th to the 3rd.
You can't.
And you start your school, actual school year on the 10th.
Can't start before the 17th.
You cannot start before the 17th.
It has to be the 16th, I think, and that's a Sunday.
We are bound by so many regulations with a very complex calendar law.
What that, what you're suggesting, Max, makes the most sense, but that would have to, that would have to give the flexibility of making that decision to the local school board, which we don't have right now. The only other suggestion I've got is what we've done before in some situations, extended school days. You're working, trying to achieve one day. Apparently, we can make up one, but if you just need that other day, extend maybe a few days, do something.
In fall semester?
In the fall semester. That would be, I'm just saying, I throw it out as a suggestion, but I think that committee needs to make a decision.
If we could get enough time that it equates to those other days, absolutely.
Comment? Go ahead.
Madam Chair, can I? Offer some thoughts. So I enjoy this process and I sat in on both of these committee meetings this year as well as one of the two last year. I've sat in on a lot of these over the years. It was very clear to me from the group, and it was a diverse group. Students spoke up, its administrators, its central office administrators, its parents. There was, there was clear, clear consensus that we would be making a mistake again if we went from an early start through Election Day with the only break in there for our teachers and staff being Labor Day. That was clearly conveyed by everybody in the room. And so that, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's where the addition of the Green Day and the Gold or Orange Day, whatever that is, Gold, I guess, came in in October. I just, I have a, I, the expertise in the room and the, and the thought and the conversation in the room, I have a hard time sending this back because there was a great deal of discussion and thought. I mean, they even went so far, there was something that came up that had to do with a work day involving Fridays and we had to get David Ball in the room because there was, there was some serious questions and concerns dealing with athletics and high school football and how that would play out. So they, they've looked at this and, and looked at all types of things. I noticed the Christmas and I, I saw that and that, but that was not, and what made me proud and what I enjoyed was the consensus of the people in the room was, how do we best deliver for, for our kids the educational value that they deserve throughout the course of that year? That was clear to me, what was being discussed and how they came to the decisions that they came to, to put this together, to bring it to us for vote. I would like to make sure, Ms. Swanger, that you and I've had this conversation before, but I want to make sure for public. You mentioned the 10th through the 14th. That's a little different, but I want to make sure, and I would think this board is in agreement with what I'm gonna say as I say this to you and to Dr. Baldwin. It was clear in that room as well that those three days that are for those teachers remain teacher days to get ready for the school year. They don't become, they don't become additional meetings. They don't become things. It's up to central office and our administrators to get the work done on the 10th and the 11th.
Correct.
So that they've got those three days. Now, that was clear from parents, from teachers and from students in that room that, that if we're gonna add this, we need to make sure that we live up to what we've done. So I would challenge all of us as a board and et cetera to make sure we do that. But I, I would not be in favor of, I just think you create more confusion than anything. Start adding some hours to take away a day or add a Saturday or do these different types of things. This group put a lot of time and effort into this and I would, I would be voting to support this calendar as presented based upon the work that that group did.
I will say, though, that the quality, the student learning is still there in what I'm proposing, that we're just changing days. The group that really has to take the brunt of all of this is our staff, which again is why I'm going back to saying, and this wouldn't even have to go to the committee, you just take two options and you let the staff ultimately decide. And again, I can appreciate all the work that was done by the calendar committee and I know y'all spent time hashing all of this out, but that's still just 37 people and this is an opportunity to make sure that when something comes down to this, these are two very bad choices. Let's just put it out there, you know, because again, the lack of flexibility we have in our calendar law. But I think that since the people that have to suffer, so to speak, through these choices ought to be the ones that make the decision as to how they want to, to move forward.
But as I understand it, even if we took away the teacher work day and the early release day in October, that still doesn't solve it, right? I mean, we still wouldn't have enough days.
About four hours. Yeah, there'd be about four hours of instruct, instructional time. And I'm just gonna argue this too and I've, I know that this is not, and a lot of people don't agree with me on this, but again, I feel like your instruction that is going to happen on the 21st or the 22nd is not going to be well received compared to the instruction that you would receive October the 5th and October the 19th. I just think kids are going to be checked out.
But my concern would then be October the 29th or September the 29th or November the 2nd, because you take those two days away, you're putting the folks who are in the trenches every day with our kids, there's gonna be, that, that was clear this year because we went through that this year without having that break for teachers to meet, for teachers to evaluate, for teachers to plan, to reassess and do, they didn't have that this year. And they were clear that they, that to me was the thing that came out of it the most was we gotta have some time there because that long stretch from the early start through then is not something they wanted to do again.
And that's all I'm saying is that I'd like to just make sure that everybody has the opportunity to be heard on that.
Okay, now I'm in a ditch.
Could I ask one more question?
Sure.
So I'm assuming these same 37 people who were on that committee had opportunity to go back to run these ideas and proposals past their colleagues.
They were encouraged to. I remember, I don't know if they did, but I know you encouraged them to.
Absolutely. And they did come back and report. The survey that we sent out in conjunction with the calendar work, we had about 1,100 responses. And it was, in fact, it was telling us, do we want to compact first semester? And if so, what does it look like and what can I be assured that I can cover my subject matter? So that was that part of the survey. The calendar committee determined they wanted an additional teacher work day and that's what you see in the month of October, looking at how many we have in the bucket and where we put them throughout the calendar. If we, if we reduce it and go from an 85-day semester to an 84-day semester, I worry that if we were to have a snow day and say, okay, we're, we're down to 84 or we're down to 83, folks, we're, we're going to move exams, you're gonna, you're, you may get out on December 18th, but your exams are going to be January 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th, immediately when they come back. I don't know what those results would be. That makes me a little bit nervous because on the previous way we did the calendar, we had time to come back, review, settle into, to the time after the holidays and then, and then test. If we were to finish school on the 18th, have holiday, come back January 5th, that is first day testing. Yeah, that, that makes me a bit nervous as well.
Well, and we look at the students coming again from a high school mindset who take the advanced placement courses, regardless of the situation, no matter how many days we miss, those exams are scheduled the first part of May.
First week of May.
So. Do you want to talk? Please speak.
First off, this is the board decision. This is why it comes to the board and that's, I certainly want to respect that. But also, sitting here and having served on that committee for multiple years, it was an incredible learning experience for me and I was so happy to share that learning experience with others further later on in my career.
You just wanted to move it on over.
But, but I do want to, I do want to recognize the efforts that are made. This committee is one of the largest committees that's assembled during our school year. It is also one of the most comprehensively represented committees. I don't know if you know exactly, but I would say there was a fairly high percentage of teachers that sat on that committee that looked at this over multiple meetings. I would anticipate that the vast majority of them were at every single meeting. There was also representatives from our parents. There were student representatives, am I correct? There were district representatives in specialty areas such as athletics, which does play into the calendar. So I think the effort to make sure that the process, it was inclusive, was representative. And I can promise you, whatever calendar you approve, when you put it out there, you will have individuals, we are a large school district, that will come in and argue particular dates with you. But I just want to make sure that from my standpoint, having served in that very, it's a difficult committee. It is a challenge, challenging committee. Just the respect for the process that took place so that what was put in front of you today represents really a valid effort to provide voices from all aspects of this school community. And also applaud the board, finish on a very positive note with the board because as Max brought up, various issues during the school year that we have no control over, mother nature, that impact the calendar immediately. This board's guidance, I think for the last six years, we have sent those surveys out, as Ms. Churchill recognized, out to our entire community. We brought forth those results and the decisions we made, Saturday school, additional incremental time, do we take a particular work day? Do we add a day on or do we look at the 1,025 minimum? I really believe we've done a remarkable job at listening and again, making sure that voices were heard. But there reaches a time where you got a calendar and we've got a lot of parents, teachers, students, stakeholders that would love to see this calendar as soon as possible in their hands because they're already planning their trips to Hawaii and Tahiti and all sorts of nice places. So just, just want to respect the job that you did, Ms. Swanger and that team.
To Marshall, to watch the river go by. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Baldwin. I am going to ask Ms. Churchill if she wants to pursue this, to make a motion to do whatever it is you want to do.
Rule the world.
I don't know that I have that kind of power, but you can go ahead.
I would like to make the motion that we do send this back briefly to committee with a survey out to all staff before voting on it.
All right. That is her motion. Did you get that, Ms.?
Point of order, I think we had a motion and a second on the floor and we were in further discussion on the calendar issue.
A motion to refer it to committee would be appropriate at the time. That's inappropriate when the main motion is still on the floor.
The main motion does not have to be withdrawn until, or vote does not have to occur.
No, sir.
I have to have a second.
So if she has a second and that passes, that would refer the main motion back to committee, the calendar to committee. That would come back and it would come back to you at your next meeting, I would, I would hope, or March, either one. So this would take a second and would need to pass and then you would not vote on the main motion. If this does not have a second or does not pass, then we would. If this does not have a second or does not pass, then we would proceed on the main motion.
So I'm looking for a second. Sorry, Ms. Churchill.
Okay.
Now, we're going back to the main motion, which is to approve the 2021 school calendar as presented. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that's two. Got that? Kim? Now, we're going on, moving right along, we're going to the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have the minutes of December 5, a personnel report, a signature stamp, policy 4240, or 7312, child abuse and related threats, policies for second reading, policy 13104002 parental involvement, policy 3620 extracurricular activities and student organizations, policy 4325 drugs and alcohol, policy 4333 weapons, bomb threats and terrorists, policy 5015 school volunteers, policy 7100 recruitment and selection of personnel, policy 7130 licensure, policy 7240 drug-free and alcohol-free workplace, policy 7241 drug and alcohol testing, and then policy 73104040, staff and student relations, policy 73608225 crowdfunding on behalf of the school system, and policy 7410 teacher contracts. And I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And in your information packet, you have financial report, the notification of informal construction and repair projects and change orders, and policies for first reading. Our next meeting is February the 6th, here in this wonderful place, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I need to see Jamie Johnson and Stanley Whelus, please.